Welcome, everybody. It's January 2nd, 2019. Happy New Year and welcome to the final meeting of the 2017-2018 council. Right? First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson absent. McKinney.
Here.
Polikus.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stoner.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We don't have any proclamations or presentations tonight or public hearings, so we'll go to announcements. Let's go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I wanted to let you know that this Saturday, January 5th, volunteers, including veterans of foreign wars, Laramie Knights of Pithias, Laramie High School rodeo team and others, will be doing a one-day Christmas tree collection. So that's January 5th, this Saturday. They just ask you have your trees out by the curb by 9:00 a.m. Anybody else that wants to volunteer, any volunteer groups or individuals that would like to help, we're meeting at Lebonne Park over by the animal shelter at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday and get everybody together there and they'll send them out on their routes. Last year, they were able to do the collection in the entire city in under three hours. All the trees then will get sent out to the landfill and we'll grind those up and they'll be part of the compost program.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you to everybody that's involved in that program that continues to make Christmas tree pickup possible since the city had to cut the service. All right. City Manager, are there any other announcements tonight? Okay. All right. Are there any disclosures by City Council members for our very long agenda tonight? No? All right. Let's move to item number six, changes in the agenda. Vice Mayor.
Okay, we have two changes this evening, so that I move that the following changes to the agenda be approved. Our first change is on the consent agenda. We are adding item 8i. It's a resolution 2019-10, appointing two members to the Downtown Development Authority. I move to approve resolution 2019-10, appointing Candace Pashati and Scott Christ to the Downtown Development Authority with a term ending June 30th, 2021, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
You have a second change. My apologies.
No, it's okay. Our other change is that we sadly neglected a public comment on our regular agenda, so we were going to add item 9a, which is public comment.
All right.
Second.
Second. All right, second by Counselor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stoner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. City Clerk, will you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson absent. McKinney.
Yes.
Polikus.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. That motion passes. All right, on to our regular agenda, which is consists of 9a, public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Judy Snow, and I just want to thank all of you for your excellent service and we're sorry to see you leave, but we're excited for new folks to come in too. So it's kind of a mixed blessing, like to keep all of you and them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Judy.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right. So before we go to adjournment, I just want to, again, echo Judy's comments of saying thank you, Counselor Stoner, Counselor Polikus, Counselor Hanson that's not here tonight, that are leaving with me. It's been a privilege. Thank you, guys. All right, item number 10.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. We are adjourned. Oh, excuse me. All those in favor, by signify by saying aye. Now we're fully adjourned.
All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the regular City Council, incoming council. It is now 6:58. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we'd like to do the oath of office for all of the incoming council members. So Erin, Brian Harrington, Jessica Stalder, and Paul Weaver, and Brian Schuster, if you would all raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm, oh, you could go ahead and stand too, sorry. Thank you. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any law related to my election
Any law related to my election.
Or appointment
Or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. At this time, we'll do roll call. Gabriel.
Here.
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
That's nine present and zero absent. In order to establish seniority of council members with equal years of service, we will do a game of chance. So to start out with, we will have McKinney and Gabriel. Our city attorney has a deck of cards. He will have you draw a card.
First time, I'm going to shuffle the cards.
Brand new.
Seal deck.
Seal, I don't see it.
It's on the table.
Oh, there it is, there it is, okay. Yeah, I see that one.
Okay, who might, who first?
Either one. It's a game of chance, so Gabriel and McKinney, oh, sorry.
Okay, aces are high and the suits are classic order, spades, hearts, diamonds, clubs.
Pick a card. I'll probably get a two. Look at it, don't anybody else see? Then put it back in.
Show it!
And Gabriel.
Don't you.
Well, I hope I can beat a three.
If you can't beat a three, you're in trouble.
Oh!
There we go!
What's that?
What'd he get?
A king.
Didn't beat a five.
Now reshuffle.
All right, so high to low card determine ranking to be Gabriel and then McKinney.
I'm the low man.
So in order to establish seniority of the council members with equal years of service, we have Councillors Harrington, O'Doherty, Stalder, and Weaver to draw from the cards.
I was last when I had to do it.
Years ago, just.
Wow, nice draw. Better done good.
I don't really want to.
This is a must.
Go ahead and show cards.
Ooh!
Erin.
So.
It's like, Erin, Brian.
Jessica.
Sorry.
That's okay, Jessica, I was last.
So high to low card determine ranking to be O'Doherty, Harrington, Weaver, and All right, we're on to item number five, the election of mayor and president of the Laramie City Council. At this time, we will do nominations. Counselor Shumway, do you have a nomination for mayor and president?
I do. I would like to nominate Pat Gabriel as the mayor and president of the City Council.
Councilmember Pierce, do you have a nomination for mayor and president of the City Council?
I'm going to nominate myself.
Councilmember Schuster, do you have a nomination for mayor and president of the City Council?
Joe Shumway.
Councilmember Gabriel, do you have a nomination for mayor and president of the City Council?
I do not.
Councilmember McKinney, do you have a nomination for mayor and president of the City Council?
Jane Pierce.
Councilmember Harrington, oh, O'Doherty, do you have a nomination for mayor and president of the City?
Jane Pierce.
Councilmember Harrington, do you have a nomination?
No.
Councilmember Weaver, do you have a nomination for mayor and president of the City Council? Councilmember Stalder, do you have a nomination for mayor and president of the City Council?
Joe Shumway.
So our nominations are Gabriel, Shumway, and Pierce. At this time, I will go in order of seniority, and you can vote for one of the nominees. Councilmember Shumway, do you have a vote?
I'll vote for Joe Shumway.
Councilmember Pierce, who do you vote for?
I'll vote for myself.
Councilmember Schuster, who do you vote for?
Joe Shumway.
Councilmember Gabriel, who do you vote for? Councilmember McKinney, who do you vote for? Councilmember O'Doherty, who do you vote for?
Jane Pierce.
Councilmember Harrington, who do you vote for?
Jane Pierce as well.
Councilmember Weaver, who do you vote for? Councilmember Stalder, who do you vote for? Okay, the vote shows four votes for Shumway, four votes for Pierce, and one vote for Gabriel. That leaves us with a tie. According to Laramie Municipal Code, it states that in the event of a tie, we take the top two nominees and we go back through and we do the vote based off from the top two. So at this time, I will go back through by seniority and ask for your vote on Shumway or Pierce. Shumway. Pierce. Schuster. Councilmember Gabriel. Councilmember McKinney. Councilmember O'Doherty. Councilmember Harrington. Councilmember Weaver.
Joe Shumway.
Councilmember Stalder. The votes show three for Shumway, or, excuse me, six for Shumway, three for Pierce. So at this time, we'll move to 5c, resolution 2019-01, appointing the mayor and president of the council of the city of Laramie, Wyoming, for the years of 2019 to 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Can you, I'm sorry, Counselor Schuster, can you state the motion? We have to insert the name of the nominee.
I move that we appoint, that the City Council elects and appoints Councilmember Joe Shumway to serve as president of the City Council and mayor of the city for the years of 2019 through 2020.
At this time, I'll do roll call. Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes. That motion carries. So at this time, congratulations, Jill. If you want it, I have a packet that has, you've done this before though, so you're going to need them, but it has the little speaking here. And a list of seniority in case you want.
We're electing the Vice Mayor this time, right?
Right. And he has the mallets. So at this time, if we could have Joe Shumway sit here.
Mayor Shumway. Congratulations. That is your now. Your now.
Thank you, Council, thank you. Mayor Somerville, and now we're going to open the nominations for the Vice Mayor of the city of Laramie. Do I have a nomination? Do you want to do that by seniority, City Clerk?
Yes, please.
Would you do that, Jane?
Sure. Councilmember Shumway, do you have a nomination for Vice Mayor and Vice President of the City Council?
I do not.
Councilmember Pierce, do you have a nomination for Vice Mayor and Vice President of the City Council?
Paul Weaver.
Councilmember Schuster, do you have a nomination for Vice Mayor and Vice President of the City Council?
I'll nominate myself.
Councilmember Gabriel, do you have a nomination for Vice Mayor and Vice President?
I'll nominate myself.
Councilmember McKinney, do you have a nomination for Vice Mayor and Vice President of the City Council? Councilmember O'Doherty, do you have a nomination for Vice Mayor and Vice President of the City Council?
Pat Gabriel.
Councilmember Harrington, do you have a nomination for Vice Mayor and Vice President?
I do not.
No? Councilmember Weaver, do you have a nomination for Vice Mayor and Vice President of the City Council? Councilmember Stalder, do you have a nomination for Vice Mayor and Vice President of the City Council?
I do not.
Our nominees are Weaver, Schuster, and Pierce.
And Gabriel.
And Gabriel.
And Gabriel. Sorry about that.
Point of word, Mr. Mayor, are nominees allowed to decline the nomination?
They are allowed to.
I decline the nomination for Vice Mayor and Vice President of the City Council.
That leaves us at three, Brian Schuster, Pat Gabriel, and Jane Pierce. City Clerk, would you go ahead and do the voting?
Councilmember Shumway, who do you vote for?
Pat Gabriel.
Councilmember Pierce, who do you vote for?
I think I'll vote for Brian Schuster.
Councilmember Schuster, who do you vote for?
I'll go for Brian Schuster.
Councilmember Gabriel, who do you vote for? Councilmember McKinney, who do you vote for? Councilmember O'Doherty, who do you vote for? Councilmember Harrington, who do you vote for?
Jane Pierce.
Councilmember Weaver, who do you vote for?
Jane Pierce.
Councilmember Stalder, who do you vote for?
Schuster.
The votes show three votes for Gabriel, four votes for Schuster, and two votes for So at this time, we'll take it back down to two again. So we could go with the top two, which would be Gabriel and Schuster. Councilmember Schuster, who do you, or Shumway, who do you vote for? Councilmember Pierce, who do you vote for?
Let's go with Pat this time.
Councilmember Schuster, who do you vote for? Councilmember Gabriel, who do you vote for? Councilmember McKinney, who do you vote for? Councilmember O'Doherty, who do you vote for? Councilmember Harrington, who do you vote for? Councilmember Weaver, who do you vote for?
Pat Gabriel.
Councilmember Stalder, who do you vote for? The votes show two votes for Gabriel, or, excuse me, two votes for Schuster, seven votes for Gabriel. So that has Pat Gabriel with the leading votes on that.
As Jane and Pat are making this move, I want to have Pat recall when we sat together in bathing suits right here on the dais, raising money for the Laramie Recreation Center.
2001.
It was a calendar and we sold them out.
They were big sellers, I'll tell you. Joe and I in bathing suits.
Mayor, at this time, if you could do 6c of resolution.
Okay, do you want me to do that, Jane?
Yeah, if you would.
This is a resolution, so we need someone to introduce this resolution from the council that anyone besides myself, I cannot. Charles, would you do that for us?
If I can find it.
I've got it. Find it. Thank you. This is resolution 2019-2, and is, I move that appointing Councilmember Pat Gabriel as Vice Mayor and Vice President of the Council of City of Laramie, Wyoming, for the years of 2019, 2020, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, it's been seconded. I guess this is a resolution. Is there any discussion on this before we go to the vote? Seeing none, City Clerk, would you do the vote?
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is selection of boards and commissions.
Seat selection.
Seats. Oh, the seating that we have, so.
Yeah.
And that's going to be by seniority.
Right.
And with everyone, the exception of the Vice Mayor and the Mayor, and we have our seats assigned. I guess you could be on either side, is that right? Is this the permanent Vice Mayor seat?
Typically, it's the right hand.
Okay.
This is great. I feel comfortable here.
On seniority, do you want to, should I give, should I then name the person and have them select a seat?
Yeah, that would be great.
And as we select these seats, do you want to have the change now, or we might as well just go ahead?
Yeah, as they're, as you call them and they select their seat, we'll just go ahead and reset it.
All right. Jane Pierce.
I'm going to go.
Oh, it's Paul over there.
Over by Paul.
Okay.
All right, so Paul, you.
I'm moving.
Okay. And then after Jane Pierce is Brian Schuster. I'm going to become your left-hand man. All right, good. Thank you, Brian. And then Charles McKinney.
I'm going to stay out of your left field.
Right field.
Right field, left field, it's one of those.
Left field out there, yeah, that's true. You're right.
If everybody's facing.
Next is Erin O'Doherty. Erin, do you have a seat?
I'll be back and grab my pen.
Just a second.
Just a second. Yeah.
After Erin will be Brian Harrington.
This is a wise man. There you go, yeah. There, okay.
Paul Weaver, you have the last selection because what you don't look is Jessica's.
Right here.
Got it. Jessica?
Stuff for nothing.
Yeah, Nancy. She just waited.
I know.
All right.
So, yeah?
Nancy is. Nancy, is it not time for us to do our boards and commissions selections?
It is.
Do all of you have, in front of you, the boards, committees, such? We'll do that by seniority again also. And are you, will you just keep track of where we are so that we don't, on this, City Clerk?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm, I think we're gonna go by seniority, so I get the first selection, I'm gonna do the Finance Committee. The second selection will be by Jane Pierce.
I'm going to pick... Laramie Chamber Business Alliance Economic Development Corporation, LCBA, and LEDC.
Okay, and Jane, could you tell us what page and about where that is, so we can all...
Right. So, it is on page three.
Three, right.
It's about two-thirds of the way down.
And there's just one, let's see.
Yes, there's just one.
Just one for that, so that's Jane Pierce.
The LCBA.
LCBA.
Now, the next selection is by Brian Schuster.
I'll do Planning Commission on the first page.
Which is also the Zoning Board of Adjustments, so there's just one selection for that. After Brian is Pat Gabriel.
I wanted to ask Paul if he's interested, since you served previously on the Parks, Tree, and Recreation Board, if you're interested in that. Because I was gonna take that again, but if you're interested in doing it, because I have a conflict with the Joint Powers Board for the Civic Center that night, and they meet the same night, I would like to continue on that. But if you're interested, I, of which is curious, whether or not I should take that or not. Not, you know, certainly go ahead and do it.
This is, Mr. Mayor.
That's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Paul.
That is a little bit outside of the protocol, but I don't think it matters. Counselor, I think that the Civic Center Advisory Board is looking at a sunset at some point in the near future, and I think it would be great if you wanted to be on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Mayor, that's gonna be my selection, the Parks, Tree, and Recreation Advisory Board.
And that's on page?
That is the first, first page, towards the bottom.
Should I ask our city attorney and maybe our city clerk, if there is a person that has a question such as was here, is that appropriate, or is that something we should just not bring up? Where? It's okay? All right.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I think that's the gentlemanly thing to do, and thank you for both of you for doing that. Okay, next is Charles McKinney.
I'll take the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals.
Page?
Page one, top, second one. I thought that one was included with the Planning Commission.
No, this is...
That's the, the Board of Appeals is on the building, so it's the thing. Okay, following Charles McKinney is Aaron O'Doherty.
I think Environmental Advisory Committee?
On page one?
Yeah, page one, in the middle of the page.
Brian Harrington.
I'm gonna do the Laramie Town and Gown Association Leadership Advisory Group. It is the bottom of the third page.
Town and Gown.
Very bottom of the third page.
Third page, yeah. Town and Gown, mine's down towards the end here.
Third page.
Well, not on Joe's.
I think I may have missed a page.
Brian, yep, yes.
Okay, next is Jessica, that's, no, I'm sorry. Next is, in seniority is Paul Weaver.
I'll select the Monolith Ranch Advisory Committee. On the first page.
Yours is really pretty.
Yeah, I printed it off the...
Oh, okay.
It's in your staple.
Let me go back to this one. Okay, now Jessica.
I'll take the Laramie Regional Airport Joint Powers Board.
Okay, now Jessica, you have the next one also, because we go from the bottom back up to the top.
Where's the airport?
So, what page is that, Jessica?
Top of the third page.
Top of the, that's the regional airport. Okay, is that one you selected?
Yeah.
Yes, the airport.
Jessica, you have the next selection.
I'll do the Downtown Development Authority.
Do you have a page?
Well, first page.
Okay, next is Paul Weaver.
The Juvenile Justice Liaison Position. Give you the page in just a sec. Community Juvenile Services Board, page three.
Okay, next selection is by Brian Harrington.
I'm gonna do it...
Let me make sure I'm doing this right. Yeah, Brian Harrington.
I'm gonna do the Albany County Tourism Board Joint Powers Board.
Did he say the page?
Um, sorry, it is the bottom of the second page.
Everybody caught up? You getting all this, Nancy? After Brian is Charles McKinney.
O'Doherty.
Did I miss? Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, Mayor, I have a question too for one of our colleagues, and I wanted to check with, I don't know how many rounds there're gonna be.
Wouldn't tell they're all gone.
Okay, so I wanted to check with Jessica Stalder at Health, if she is interested in Board of Health.
I am.
But, okay, then I will pick, then I would like to be on the Advisory Commission for Disabilities.
Advisory Commission on Disabilities on page one. Okay, now Charles.
I'm gonna take the Laramie Rifle Ranch. Third page, two-thirds down. And it doesn't state on there, it says, "Meet during months of no inclement weather." You know that it's a second Wednesday at 7:00 PM. Okay, above the months.
Pat Gabriel?
Yes, I'd like to see the Laramie Plain Civic Center Joint Powers Board finish things up, so I would request that I continue on that board. It's top of the page three.
Okay. Brian Schuster?
I'll do Finance Committee, page one.
It's on page two.
It's on, yes, on my page two. There's one more position on the Finance Committee. The next selection is Jane Pierce.
So, I have a question. I remember a resolution for the mayor to always be on the Civil Service Commission. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, basically, we're gonna pull the Civil Service Commission choice off, and it's automatically goes to...
I'll select the next.
Shumway? Okay, I just didn't wanna go right. Sorry, I'm trying to just... I think, um, I think, is, the, was there a resolution related to the Pilot Hill project?
That's appointed by the county commissioners. Yeah, but there's some that's, who's on there now? I am. You have to be appointed by the county commissioners.
So, then this one's also off the table?
I'm guessing it is, 'cause unless you wanna get permission from them to put that person on there. 'Cause I had to go in front of them to be appointed.
Nancy, you're on that, or else is that your understanding?
When Mayor, Mayor, if I could just have one moment, I can find the email from Deputy Clerk, the county, Deputy County Clerk. And so, I believe she said that is appointed by the commissioners.
Would you select that?
So, I apologize, I didn't take that off.
So, I'll just X that one off as well?
Brian will select that when it comes out.
Okay, then I will jump on Finance.
Okay, Finance now is finished. Okay, Jane, let's see, now I, I'm selecting the Civil Service, and then my next selection will be Urban Systems Advisory Committee. Jane, it's back to you.
Let me put this in the direction of...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Civil Service is on, both of these are on page two. Civil Service is towards the bottom, and just about that is Urban Systems Advisory Committee. And now we're back to Jane. Give them both?
Back to me again?
Back to you.
Okay. Trying to figure out how much trouble I can cause here. I think I will join Mayor Shumway and do the Urban Systems Advisory Committee.
Okay, next is Brian Schuster.
I was gonna do Urban Systems too, and I think I still will.
Okay. So, the Urban Systems is now full of three appointments. Pat Gabriel?
Is the Local Emergency Planning Committee still open?
It's still open.
I would like that one, and that is on page...
It's just about Urban Systems.
Yes, page two, in the middle of the page.
All right, everybody ready? Next is Charles McKinney.
Do you want...
Go ahead.
Do you want the Board of Health?
I really do.
You?
If you want.
Well, no, I'm trying to find one that fits time for me. It's very difficult to find time, especially during day...
The Traffic Commission is at 7:00 AM, if you're a morning person.
My day starts at five to six o'clock in the morning, and then nothing all day during the day, like midday, unless I, and then busy from four to seven, as you can see what happened tonight. Laramie Building Authority, it says meets here, does it, do they have a regular meeting for that, or no? Do we know, is it, how often do they meet? It does not say that. Laramie Building Authority says, "Contact Cindy Williams." Page two, top of the page, and right under the Traffic Commission. Oh, so that's not even supposed to be on there now?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that one did not get taken off from your copy. I apologize.
Can I pass?
Can pass, that's permitted. Do you wanna pass?
Uh, well, I don't see, I'm trying to find another one that fits my time schedule, my restraints, because I don't wanna get something that I can't make it to. Yeah, let me pass, and I'll look for another one.
Okay. All right. Okay, after, after Charles McKinney is Aaron O'Doherty.
LCBA Beautification Committee.
Page?
Uh, I'm sorry, page three, mid-page.
Brian Harrington?
I'm gonna take the Laramie Youth Council. Uh, it's on the last page.
Paul Weaver?
I'll take the LCCC Albany County Campus Advisory Council. That is top, Outside Boards on page three.
Jessica, you're doing the Board of Health?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, it's your turn again.
It's kind of stressful.
That page is done.
The page one is complete. And on page two, we still have the Traffic Commission, and that's it, on page two, correct?
Yep.
On my page two. On page three, there's quite a few.
I guess I'll take the Community Alcohol Consumption and Best Practices Review Committee.
Next Monday.
Great.
Okay, that's on page what?
Are you on the ad hoc, if that's what you want? Very last thing.
Very last.
Oh, okay, I got that one.
May I confirm that was the ad hoc alcohol committee?
Community Alcohol Consumption and Best Practices.
And, by the way, that ends in March. All right, now, on this one, just so you know, we're gonna have... we're gonna have someone from each ward. You're taking Ward One. I think she's Ward Three.
She's Ward One.
Your Ward One, okay. Okay, now you've selected your two, so back to Paul Weaver.
Okay. I would also like to choose to be on the Governing Body Subcommittee for the Laramie Youth Council.
That's page. There's one left on there. Brian Harrington. All right, next is Brian Harrington.
Give me just one second. I will do the Wyoming Territorial Park Board. I'm sorry, that's on page three.
Next is Charles McKinney, do you have a selection left?
Can't, can't do the Pilot Hill, she took the Ward One. I can't do that one. I have to pass.
Okay. Next is Pat Gabriel?
I'm gonna pass.
Okay, next is Brian Schuster?
Historical Railroad Depot Board.
Back on.
Back on.
Page?
Um, two. And I think that completes two.
Yep.
Okay. Next is Jane Pierce?
So, I'm sorry. Counselor Schuster, which one did you say?
Historical Railroad Depot Board. Be the last one on page two. All the others, I believe, were filled. I should be wrong?
Maybe not mine.
It is just under the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance Economic Development Corporation that you were on earlier.
Counselor Weaver?
Okay, so... Yes, Mr. Mayor, do you wanna resolve this issue first?
Go ahead.
So, it's, um, he took the Laramie Railroad Depot Association Board? Okay. So, let me take a look here.
I think I skipped on that.
Oh, well, okay, let's go back to you, because you should be, yeah, the arrows go every which way, so I'm listing...
So, I guess I'll take Traffic Commission, since I'm such an early bird.
Yeah, that is...
Oh, thanks, Erin. Shoot!
And then after Jane, you make your selection, why don't we go review what's left, Nancy, if you can just tell us what we have left. But let's, and Paul, did you have a question before we...
I do, Mr. Mayor, and that is the Public Art Committee. The city does have a liaison to that committee.
It's a beautification, isn't it?
Is it through beautification, or is it a separate?
It's a separate board.
And it's not on the list.
Is that supposed to be on the list? Okay.
Mayor, I suggest the clerk can use...
We can appoint at our next meeting.
Okay, we'll do that then.
So, what's it called, Art Committee?
Public Art. Public Art. See if that's one that's appointed by the mayor, if it's selected by the council.
I believe so. Maybe it's handled through a different process, I don't know.
We'll bring that out, we'll deal with that in our first meeting, our next meeting. Jane, did you select one yet?
So, it appears, based on my scribbling and scratching here...
I only show two left.
It appears, I don't have any more time. That there are two, three left, either, and maybe Nancy can confirm with me and my note-taking here. There is one spot on the Governing Body Subcommittee for the Laramie Youth Council.
Correct.
And there are two spots, one from Ward Two and one from Ward Three, on the Community Alcohol Consumption and Best Practices Review Committee, which you mentioned is ending in March. Do you think that's correct?
That's correct, that's what I show currently.
All right, I will do the Ward Two on Alcohol Consumption.
Okay, and I'll do the Laramie Youth Committee. What do we have left? City Clerk?
We have Ward Three for Alcohol Consumption and Best Practices.
Let's see who's next on the list for Ward Three. Erin?
Brian.
Brian?
My show.
And Pat. And then seniority, it's Pat. And then Erin, well, I guess, Pat, you're, did you want to pass, or take that?
I, I can't go, it's not in my timeframe to be able to go.
They meet, they meet at, from 1:00, let's see, what?
2:30.
3:30.
2:30.
2:30 until about 3:30 on Mondays.
Right.
Second...
Every other week.
Every other week.
Till we're done.
It's tough for me.
I can do it if you...
All right. So, that completes the Boards, Commissions, and Committees, correct?
Thanks, Erin.
Correct.
And then we'll, we will all get a update, it'll be provided for us, and then you start getting notices when those meetings are... Keep us busy. Okay, any questions, anyone has about these appointments and such, before we go to the next item?
Mayor, if we could just have a motion to, um, set that resolution 2019-03.
Who made the motion?
No one has that this time.
Okay, so we need to, first of all, make the motion to set these appointments to these Boards and Committees.
I move to approve
Appointments?
Resolution.
To the Boards and Commissions for the City Council members?
As selected.
As selected.
Oh, I did find it.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is that...
Mayor, if we could have them add and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
And authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Thank you.
Second agrees.
Okay. All right, any discussion, any questions, any of this, before we vote? Seeing none, would you do roll call?
Schuster?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
O'Doherty? Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses, zero nos, and zero absent. That motion carries.
So, that passes. In fact, I'm supposed to say after every, after every motion, that whether it passes or fails, and so, everything has passed so far, for the record. Item number nine, does anyone wanna make a, a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2019-04?
I can do it if you'd like.
Would you do that, Counselor Schuster?
I move that the council approve Resolution Number 2019-04, designating the Laramie Boomerang as the official legal newspaper of the City of Laramie, Wyoming, for the calendar years 2019 and 2020, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded? Did you get the second? Okay, any discussion? Any comment from the public? Okay, back to the council. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call on, on this resolution?
Weaver?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
My apologies, Gabriel, I will get you in the right order. That's nine yeses, zero nos, Your Honor.
That passes. Item number 10, Counselor Weaver, would you introduce Resolution 2019-05?
Introduce it or read the motion?
Would you read the motion?
I move that council approve Resolution 2019-05, setting the time, date, and location of pre-council meetings, regular meetings, work session meetings, and public hearings of the City Council, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none, anything from the public? Seeing none, council, back to you. Let's vote.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
And that also passes. Now, we have item number 11, which is disclosures by the City Council members, does anyone need an explanation of what that is? From our city attorney, before we ask for disclosures? You okay? Are there any disclosures by anyone in the City Council regarding any items that we have discussed or will discuss in this agenda? Okay, seeing none, um, let's go to item number 12, and Vice Mayor, can I ask you to introduce number 12?
Yes, Mayor, this is a consideration of changes in the agenda and setting the agenda, and I'm not sure, since we didn't have a pre-council, what we need to do on this.
We just feel like we normally do it.
Okay.
Because there are no, no changes, then we just go to setting the agenda. I could wish to set the agenda as presented.
Okay. Mayor, I would move that we set the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Gabriel?
Uh, let's see, B, correct?
Second part of that.
On 13.
Okay.
Yep.
I would move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, I would do a roll call on the consent agenda. Now, you have to make a motion for the...
We just did a motion for the consent agenda, yeah, so now we just need to do roll call. Um, Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
I did it again. O'Doherty?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, so the consent agenda has been approved. And now we go to the regular agenda. We're gonna start with public comments on non-agenda items, and as you can see, that leaves it up to whatever. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on, on a topic that's not on the agenda, or on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, did you wanna do 18, the consideration of...
18.
Or do I have this on my...
I, on mine, I have 18 as adjournment, do you have a new, do we have an item that's on the regular agenda?
Public comments on non-agenda items, consideration of future council work session topics.
You're good, Mayor, I'm sorry, I apologize, my notes are backwards.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone in the public would like to make any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move to, number, item number 17, which is consideration of future council work session topics. Anyone on the council that wants to introduce anything they'd like to see on a work session topic for us to put on our agendas? Counselor Gabriel?
Well, Mayor, I would just suggest that maybe for our new members, we could be brought up to date on what's on the agenda from the next couple of work session meetings. Is that appropriate at this time?
The staff has provided a, a orientation booklet, and Janine, is there anything that you have planned for us to work with anyone other than what you're doing outside of council meetings?
Mayor and council, I would direct you to 14B on your consent agenda.
14B?
That really represents the schedule of work sessions through January. Um, you'll see, next week, on January 8th, we'll be giving you an overview of the resident responses from the Street Financial Plan Work Session Series that we've had, also looking at the conditional use process and land use by zoning district, as well as an update from Bob on the Laramie Plain Civic Center. On the 22nd, we'll have a progress report on the retail efforts that are underway, and then we're hoping, on January 22nd, to also conduct the joint work session with the school board, that has been in planning for about four months now on city-owned property on Boulder Drive, south of the rec center and north of the high school. Um, and then, of course, at the end of the month, you have already scheduled your council retreat for... 25th and 26th. 25th and 26th. The efforts for this month are focused at trying to wrap up any loose ends that we have. Um, I also have an email prepared that will go out to you tomorrow, asking for you to identify whether the lists of topics currently requested by council and in the queue, whether you'd like those to remain, or whether you'd like to create new topics, or, or you have issues of higher priority.
City Clerk?
We also have the legislative work session meet and greet that we will be scheduling. Um, we're still coordinating with the legislature to set that up.
You think that'll be in January?
Um, we were looking at January 28th to February 1st. Um, I had asked for availability, and it looks like so far, everyone that's responded is available the whole week.
Good. All right. Any, any other items that you would like to have for work sessions?
Mr. Mayor, I think I would like to get that email, take a look, and then...
This, this comes up on our agenda regularly, so we have plenty of opportunities to add items to, to our work sessions. Okay, now, we're on to item number 18. I guess I'm going to start with having our senior member of the council, not in age, but in seniority.
Almost age.
Would you?
I picked this seat specifically to get this honor. I didn't know if it came with this seat or not. So, I move to adjourn.
Second. For a minute and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.